Everyone on council ready? Dennis, you're ready?
I'm ready. Sorry for late.
That's okay. No problem. So we'll go ahead and get started. Good morning. I hereby call to order the adjourned city council meeting from last Thursday. This morning is July 26, 2021, and it is 9:16 a.m. City Clerk, if we can have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Garner.
Here.
Councilmember Coors.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Holstage.
Here.
All councils present.
Thank you. And we are moving on to the adjourned item, which is item 5C, review and discussion of draft 2021 to 2029 housing element, the draft land use plan and proposed build out. If we can have a staff report, please. Good morning, Flynn. Welcome.
Morning, everyone.
Thank you for being here. And just to confirm, we are on PSTV. We're live, right? We're not seeing the screen we normally see.
Yes, I'm on the YouTube streaming it now, so I do see it.
Great. Thank you. So we just started with item 5C. If we can have a staff report, please.
Okay. Mr. Newell is connecting to audio. If you'll just give him one moment, please. Maybe while we're waiting for Mr. Newell, there have been comments that we received both at the Planning Commission and from council members relative to the rather short timeframe that we're on for the housing element. One of the things to keep in mind is that we've just been through a pandemic, and the state did not extend its deadlines relative to that pandemic. So we had from essentially June 15 until the submittal deadline for the draft housing element on July 30 to do all of our in-person public outreach. Based on the direction from city council, you wanted us to go beyond what we would typically do. And so we did that by going out to the neighborhoods and meeting with individual groups. But keep in mind, we really couldn't start that until there was the ability to meet in person, and that didn't happen until June 15. And so what we did was we spent more time meeting with the public rather than with Planning Commissioner, City Council, and giving you time to review the document. I think that is probably the best approach. The things that we heard from the neighborhood has dramatically informed what we are doing with the housing element and really gives us a sense of what the needs of the community are. And so I think in your direction, in having us go out and meet with the neighborhoods was important, more so than any time that we as staff or you as the council or the Planning Commission spent with the document itself. So again, it's unfortunate that the state didn't see to extend the deadline for turning in our draft element. But overall, I think it's important that the community has had the opportunity to speak with us, to give us their input and their feedback. With that, David, do you want to go ahead and start with your PowerPoint?
Yeah, I'll pull it up here just for a moment. So Mayor and City Council staff and the General Plan Update Consultant Placeworks, we are pleased to present the drafts 2021 through 2029 housing elements. So just to go over some of the things that we wanted to touch on today, just reflect on kind of where we've been, some of the background and process that we've had thus far as it relates to the general plan update that we started in 2019, go over some of the housing element goals and policies and programs, touch on the land use changes relative to the definitions and descriptions, go through some of the map changes that we are looking at as part of the land use plan, and then finally discuss the proposed build out projections that relate to all of the proposed land uses. So as you recall, we started this process back in winter of 2019, where we collected much of the data to inform kind of where we are in our current situation with land use on the ground, existing land uses, as well as what we had in updates in terms of what we've changed since 2007. So we started with all of our baseline data and started talking about how we wanted to change the vision and priorities in early 2020. And then bringing us forward, we have been updating the land use plan and housing element based on direction that we've been getting from the General Plan Steering Committee, surveys that we've pushed out to the public for input, community workshops, and then targeted outreach. So as you can see right now, we're in the pink section where we're talking about the land use plan and housing element. We'll continue to discuss the goals and policies for the documents that we are updating, as well as finalizing our vision and priorities here in the next several months. We'll also get into the environmental analysis that is required under the California Environmental Quality Act, especially as it relates to adoption of the housing element, because that will need to be completed before we can adopt the housing element. And then we expect to have the full document completed by April of next year. That's a little bit different from our housing element, which is on a separate timeline due to the statutory deadlines that we have relative to that document. So part of the outreach that we have done for the housing element, one of the important parts of that has been our has been the neighborhood listening sessions that we held in late June. So we had four sessions in different areas of the city to get feedback and input on housing, the vision, and environmental justice topics. We heard a lot from the community in terms of what obstacles and barriers they had as it relates to housing, as well as getting access to everyday needs and transit. So some of the things that we heard relative to housing are the high costs of rental housing being an issue, lack of ability to attain affordable housing or rental housing, concerns with rent increases in various areas of the city, especially, we also heard especially concerns, big concerns about standard housing conditions. So those are some important components that we heard as a part of the outreach. We also heard some comments about difficulty obtaining home ownership. There was certainly a desire for some of the community members that, you know, it's becoming less and less attainable from various, from various community members, from those who were kind of mid-career, middle income, as well as those that have that may be lower income that would like to also have homeownership. And then we also heard that credits for requirements for rental housing has also been a barrier. So the input that we received, we looked at all the goals and policies and our programs and said, how can we include that? So we, I think, believe we've included in our goals and policies ways to address some of these comments. So in terms of the housing element and the fundamental kind of components of it, the regional housing needs allocation, or it's commonly referred to the RINA, is the regional housing that we have to plan for specifically for Palm Springs. These are numbers that are provided by Southern California Association of Government based on population and job growth, equity, and other factors. So these numbers that we have to plan for for the next eight-year period, 2021 through 2029, totals 2,557 new housing units. As you can see in the table on the right, that is roughly 10, just under 10 times higher than the previous RINA allocation we had for the prior planning period from 2014 to 2021. You can see on the right, the third column over is that total of 272 total units that we had to plan for during that period. For our upcoming planning period, we have a total of 2,557 new units ranging from very low to above moderate income. It's important to note that the city is not required to build these units, but we do get credit for any new units that are built during the planning period. So we do need to also ensure that we have a buffer of about 15 to 30% over the 2,500 numbers, because as time, as we've seen over time, some of these properties or units may not come to fruition. So in our housing element that we have the For You, we have planned for those additional, that additional buffer. We also have to, and we also need to make sure that we have adequate land zones to accommodate the RINA numbers. So in terms of the strategy that we used to meet these numbers, we looked at all of the vacant sites in the city that were zoned for housing currently, and will have appropriate infrastructure such as sewer, water, electricity, and have public services available. We evaluated the accessory dwelling units that the city has had in terms of the trends that we've seen from those being built, and we've projected how many, based on the trend that we've seen, how many of those units will be are expected to be built in the next eight-year period. And then after we've determined our vacant sites and the number of accessory dwelling units, we had to decide what number of, how much land needed to redesignate to achieve a greater density and allow for greater potential for additional units. So we looked at redesignating six acres of land to high-density residential to achieve our RINA numbers. to achieve our arena numbers and as well as our buffer. So table three thirty-two of the um of the of the document shows uh kind of a summary of how we uh intend to address our housing affordability levels. You see on the uh, the left column where we're looking at credits, um, regional housing needs for approved projects. Uh, we have the regional housing needs is the top row nine hundred and fifty-three, lower income, four hundred and sixty-one, moderate and one thousand one hundred and forty-three. Uh, so those are the arena numbers for the varying income levels. Approved projects that we know have uh have been entitled and expect to be underway in the next planning period. Uh, we have a a few lower and moderate income projects, uh, such as the chalk project. The Allo at Palm Canyon project, formerly Agave Palm Canyon project. Um, and then we also have a number of above above moderate income level projects that are either under construction at the moment or will be uh under construction. Obviously you can see a number of, there's a, it's a very lot, a vast majority of our our numbers. So we have roughly twenty-four hundred that's expected to be built during that that cycle or this this planning period. We also have, as I looked at, as I mentioned, the accessory dwelling units that we've seen historically in the recent years. And how those have been steadily increasing, uh, particularly as it relates to changes to state laws, as well as the city's local zoning code. Um, to really facilitate and encourage the construction of accessory dwelling units. Uh, we know that accessory dwelling is typically can house um lower or moderate income levels because of the generally the size of those units or those units have also been um available to family members who may not have been able to afford to buy a house or rent a house elsewhere in the city. So we do know that those those units do certainly accommodate lower and moderate income. Um, and then we also evaluated what sites that we currently have that are vacant. That are appropriately zoned for multifamily, either high or medium density. So we have the lower incomes here and moderate incomes at roughly eight hundred and fifty-four units. Um, and then lastly, the total sites that we looked at rezoning, the six acres that I mentioned would accommodate uh about two hundred and eighty-one lower and a hundred and fifty moderate. So that gets us to uh, that exceeds our our total uh RINA allocation as well as gives us the the uh buffer that we would like to see in the event that some of these sites don't come to fruition during the eight-year period. Table three thirty-one of the document shows the specific sites that we um have identified for the various lower and moderate income levels. Uh, so that shows you all of the specific locations for the sites that can give us the ability to arrive at these numbers.
Excuse me, David, can you show that? Oh, three thirty-one, just so the public can see it. Thank you. Since we have it.
And for the public, it's on page one thirty of the general plan housing element um attached in the packet and that's five C dash forty, a hundred and forty-two, so the hundred and forty-second page in our in the packet that's online. But yes, please, David, do show the table for the public and go over it in a bit of detail if you can.
Certainly. So so table three thirty-one here, you can see uh in this uh, when I go to the next slide here, you'll see the the correlating numbers that uh reflect these sites, numbers and letters. So we have the affordable approved affordable housing projects. Here, these are A, B and C in the map. So we have the summarized listed two is A, the chalk project is B. And the Allo at Palm Canyon project is C. So we've identified those three um sites from this table. And those are all, you can see that the assessors parcel numbers are all showing all of these sites. Sites that have adequately zoned, uh, they're adequately zoned to provide a higher density or medium density um project are also shown here in sites one through fourteen. And then we have sites that we look at for rezoning and those are sites fifteen through seventeen. So that's really what we, how we reference the the total number of sites as well as the density.
David, just a quick question, just on this is the vacant sites include ones that are zoned for housing and ones were being asked to rezone. Right? Is there any distinction between those on this chart? So we in the public knows what they are without having to look up parcel numbers that most people don't know how to do.
Yeah. So sites one through fourteen are the ones that are currently zoned for higher, medium density residential. Sites fifteen through seventeen are the ones that we're proposing to change to high-density residential. So uh, site fifteen is located here, fifteen and sixteen are located here off of North Palm Canyon and via Esquina. And site seventeen is located off of Indian Canyon Drive here north as you head out of town. But the other sites are all sites that have been um that are already currently zoned high-density or medium-density. So so that's kind of just an overview of our arena and the strategy to uh, uh, address the number that we have been given from SCAG uh, and the state. Um, you know, every city and county is 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 dealing with these higher numbers. And so we feel that the the approach that we're using uh, will certainly get us to to that number um as well as providing a buffer above. In terms of the uh, goals, policies and programs of the document, we have five main goals um with a number of policies within each uh to address the housing needs um for the next eight-year period. Uh, these are really just a summary look at each of these. We're looking at a diverse, balanced housing opportunities, housing and neighborhood quality. Housing assistance and special needs, resource conservation and fair housing. Um, for each of these goals, we've established um programs to really make actionable um the the to to realize the goals that we've laid out. So that's uh, we'll go through through each of these now. And and now if if any council members have questions or comments or as we get into some of these um, goals, policies and programs, certainly, please, please interrupt me and 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 let me know if there's additional things that you'd like to see or additional uh comments that you might have. So in terms of the the first goal for a diverse balance uh housing opportunities. We s- we state that we'd like to facilitate a diverse and balanced range of housing types, prices and opportunities to address current and future housing needs in the city. We have a number of goals um to to uh, address that. And so we obviously want to make sure that we have adequate residential sites through our our zoning and appropriate land use designations. Uh, to ensure that we have a broad range of housing opportunities. That's one of our policies. We want to make sure that we facilitate and encourage single-family homes, apartments, townhomes, mobile homes, special needs housings. And consider smaller courtyard and or small lot developments to address the need for middle-income housing. And I think that really relates back to what some of the comments that we've heard. Um, you know, if if we aren't addressing our housing needs for uh kind of the middle income, how do we do that? Um, you know, when the planning commission reviewed the document, there was discussion about potentially eliminating single-family zoning or uh, addressing kind of what some of the other states or cities and counties have done to to that end. And uh, the commission ultimately said that it it's certainly something that the city could evaluate. I think it, they said that it requires if I could quote uh baby steps uh to get there. And maybe perhaps looking at specific areas where that might be achievable uh as opposed to a wholesale elimination of it. But it it was a uh, a conversation that the commission did discuss. And um, ultimately landed on it's 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 something that the city could look at. Um, but it would require, I think, a greater conversation with the community. And and uh, and if it were to be done, it needs to be looked at carefully. Uh, in terms of some of the other recommendations that the commission had, they felt that the city should look at investigating self-help housing um programs to uh to help some of the lower or moderate income households. Uh, we have programs to evaluate our ADU. Um, as you can see here, one of the programs that you'll, that we have in our document uh, is to look at ADU development as uh throughout the planning period to ensure that uh, we are on target for what we have uh projected relative to our ADUs. Um, one of some of the commission comments related to that are can can the city do a pre-approved to ADU uh, as an incentive? And so um, that's something that the commission suggested as a part of the potential uh programs that we can look at to uh improve the housing element. They also suggested establishing an outreach program to educate homeowners associations on um, ADUs uh because there was some sentiment that homeowners associations don't uh often know the rules for ADUs or what the state uh law allows for ADUs. So that was a a topic that uh, or a comment that the commission had that could that that they mentioned could help uh improve our um, some of the programs here within this this housing goal. So so that uh, so that's our first housing goal. Um, and then, as I mentioned, there are uh, nine policies related to that. And then we have um if I can refer to the end of our housing element that summarizes all of the programs that we have to um take action on these goals and policies, table three thirty-five. Uh, there are a number of regular, a number of um programs that we've included in the housing element to to achieve this this goal. Uh, so those relate to, as I, as you see here on the screen, ensuring that we have adequate sites. That we have regulatory incentives um to address all of income levels, um, such, you know, such as ensuring that there's density bonuses for lower income or moderate income levels. Uh, we have financial incentives, which the council has already uh established a multifamily incentive program. Um, so that would be reviewed as projects are come in, as projects come in. We have to ensure that we have consistency with our general plan and zoning. Uh, so that's something that we would have to undertake annually um to make sure that we have addressed any issues relative to conflicts on the general plan and our zoning code. Uh, as I mentioned, we have an ADU program in our action table. And um, and as I said, the commission has made some suggestions relative to improving this program. We have a program to address small lot housing and reviewing existing that land use designations and making amendments as needed to provide opportunities for middle-income housing. We have a hotel conversion program that is is a program that we would uh, consider changes to regulations to allow for hotel conversions. And then we have a inclusionary housing program that we study the feasibility and effectiveness of the inclusionary housing ordinance. Um, and if feasible, that we evaluate taking an action on that program. So some of these have, some of these programs have uh, specific years in terms of the timeframe to complete. Uh, the last three are looked at, we would look at these last three on the right. Uh, within the next couple of years, the others would be as either projects are submitted or on an annual basis. So uh, housing goal number two is relative to housing and neighborhood equality. This goal states that we should foster a high quality of life in vibrant neighborhood and vibrant neighborhoods through the preservation and improvement of housing and neighborhood character and the provision of community services. So this uh this housing goal has a number of um policies relative to you know, strengthening neighborhood organizations, um, enhancing the appearance and character of neighborhoods. Encourage the preservation and restoration of homes, maintain the quality of housing through enforcement actions. Uh, and so we have a number of of policies that we include as part of this housing goal. And then we have several programs, as you can see, to uh, achieve the the goals and policies um during the eight-year period. So first is uh, you see design standards. Actually, before I get into the programs, I I do want to say that the planning commission in terms of the goals and policies had a suggestion relative to the last policy. That would be policy two point nine uh where discusses the conversion of apartments into condominiums. Uh, there is a recommendation that we discourage that as opposed to investigating or evaluating those on a case-by-case basis. So there was a suggestion to strengthen that and look at ways to discourage apartment conversions to condominiums as those can uh can be a loss of lower income or affordable housing options for people in Palm Springs. Um, so that is was one of the comments that we heard from the commission relative to the policies for that goal. And those call in that policy. In terms of the programs, uh, we have a program for design standards. So we have a uh, action item to continue to implement residential design standards through architectural review. Uh, and then adopt objective residential design and development standards to allow housing projects to be reviewed in a consistent and timely manner. So that is one of the actions that we have um and will evaluate by the end of twenty twenty-four. The uh, next program is historic preservation. We have uh, continue to implement the historic preservation ordinance and uh, evaluate the historic resource survey. So the commission had a recommendation that we investigate opportunities to incentivize adaptive reuse for multifamily housing. Uh, so that would be one way to strengthen this uh, program. And it's the next program that we have, property maintenance. Uh, so that's really to implement code enforcement programs to get voluntary compliance or if necessary administrative citations in court action. We also have a program that uh requires that by we provide outreach education on co-related health hazards, provide assistance where appropriate to address property and structural code violations. So that's a program that we feel is effective and would be would be helpful for the next eight-year period. That would be ongoing or as projects are identified. Housing rehabilitation is the next program and that is relative to continuing the provision to have brands to income-qualified residents to make improvements to their homes. And then this participation for nonprofits to assist with maintaining properties and funding home repairs. Uh, the commission felt that we should look at ways to evaluate and improve mobile home and trailer homes. Um, as it seems as though some of these parks within our city have um have been neglected and could require additional assistance. So that was a recommendation. So that was a recommendation from the commission on that item. The next program relative to development processing is to use only code regulations annually for cleanup items that are might be necessary and modify the development process in light of current building activity as resources are available. And then the next program we have is preserve at-risk housing. Support county rental housing voucher programs and provide CBD CDBG financial assistance when available to local nonprofit organizations that can be used for motel vouchers. So we feel that that's an important component to continue to preserve at-risk housing. The next program is neighborhood services and looking at ways to continue to support, promote and work with recognized neighborhood organizations for improve and maintain neighborhoods in Palm Springs. The commission had some suggestions relative to this item. They suggested that we evaluate ways to ensure multifamily residential and mobile home parks are included in the north. As appears that sometimes these areas might be excluded in certain neighborhood organizations. So that was a suggestion of the commission's.
David, I have a question. And you mentioned the working with the county in terms of support for purchasing homes. I also want to just mention what this city can do to kind of assist with those because the county program, you actually have to make you have to meet their income requirements. And I think they top out at like a household income of something like fifty-five thousand, and we just don't have housing that would be in the range for those folks. And then if you are more moderate income or just above, you don't have any housing opportunities. So there's like a large group of of people who are kind of in that middle, who don't qualify for anything. And then the lower income folks who still don't qualify for any, they technically qualify for the program, but then there's nothing to buy. So if there's some way we can kind of bridge those gaps for both groups, I think that could that could help a lot.
Certainly, yeah, that I mean, those were comments that we we heard through our outreach. So we can certainly look at ways or programs to that might be effective in addressing that. Capital improvements, we have a program that is relative to the capital improvement plan and infrastructure in neighborhoods and exploring options to extending more targeted neighborhood efforts and focusing on disadvantaged areas that are in need. So that would be conducted annually. Lastly, neighborhood safety is program two point nine, implement community policing activities collaboratively with residents to address safety concerns in neighborhoods and continue to continue traffic management and safety programs such as sidewalk improvements, safe routes to schools and other programs to limit vehicular hazards. So the planning commission recommended that we need to look at ways to improve pedestrian and bicycle connectivity and investigate implementing a crime-free multi-housing program for apartment homes. So those were a couple of recommendations from the planning commission on improving the policies here as well as program. Housing goal number three, relative to housing assistance and special needs. We look to facilitate and encourage a broad range of rental and ownership opportunities, housing products and community-supported services for people with special needs. The policies that we recommend here are relative to supporting the development of housing, development of accessible and affordable senior rental housing that is readily accessible to support services. Assist in funding the development of emergency transitional and permanent supportive housing and shelters, increasing the supply of affordable and accessible housing suited to the semi-independent living needs of people with disabilities. And so we have a number of policies relative to our housing and special needs in Palm Springs. The planning commission recommended that we also look at including a policy relative to tailoring parking for the type of residential use as well as a program that would look at ways to modify our parking standards to address the occasion where we might have one housing type that doesn't require as much parking as others. So that was one of the recommendations from the planning commission when they reviewed the document. They also had a policy recommendation or one that we should include relative to ensure that newer multifamily residential housing is designed and built to meet special needs or those of the disabled folks. So that was another policy recommendation for the planning commission. Relative to that, they suggested a program that we explore the design guidelines and standards for addressing disabled within multifamily projects. So that could be a policy and a program that we could add to improve this this goal. As you can see here, we have a number of programs relative to achieving the goals and policies for this item. Rental assistance, emergency rental assistance programs. Support and expand housing services to assist people living with HIV or AIDS, housing accessibility programs, permitting of residential care facilities, housing for homeless people, encourage resource linkages and mobile home stabilization. So there is, as I said, the commission had a number, a couple of recommendations to improving the programs for this goal for this goal and the policies within it. So we will be happy to include that as part of the modification before it's submitted to the state. Housing goal number four, resource conservation. This goal is relative to the city fulfilling housing needs while also protecting the natural environment and resources, the safety of housing and promoting an environmentally sustainable ethic. So you can see on page one sixty-two of the general plan housing element, we have seven policies relative to this goal. Requiring that all housing projects be thoughtfully integrated into natural environment, considering the protection of washes, hillsides, view sheds, and features of the terrain. Encouraging green building practices and energy conservation, encouraging the conservation of water resources, supporting our multi-species habitat conservation plan and tribal habitat conservation plan. So we have a number of recommendations or I should say policies in our document to ensure that we are addressing our resources concerning those resources to the extent possible. The commission had some suggestions on some of the policies here. They recommend that we actually exceed our instead of just encouraging green building practices and the conservation of water resources. They suggested that we not only encourage but exceed where possible building practices and energy conservation standards and conservation of water resources. So really just going one step further relative to the policies of this goal. For the programs that we have included in this at this goal, those are programs four point one through four point four, and these are hillside development review. Continue to amplify our hillside development standards to protect view sheds and topography and revise the hillside development standards as needed to continue meeting our preservation objectives. Continually, our next one is water conservation program and energy, residential energy conservation. As you know, we've already done a number of things to address our energy conservation, and we'll continue to look at that program as well. And then our Chela Valley Multi-Species Habitat Conservation Plan, continuing to implement that plan as well as a tribal habitat conservation plan. We also received some comments from Sustainability Commissioner, Mr. Friedman, who has made some suggestions that the commission recommended we evaluate and include as a part of our updates to this section before we submit it to the state. We along housing goal five. Address, this is relative to fair housing and ensuring that housing opportunities are available to all without regard to race, color, ancestry, national origin, religion, marital status, familial status, age, gender, disability, source of income, sexual orientation, military status, or other arbitrary factor. So this is a new goal. We addressed fair housing in our previous element, but this is really more taking a deeper look at some of the issues from Palm Springs in the sort of past and ensuring that we are affirming, promoting, and considering social justice and equity in the provision type and affordability of housing and services to all functions residents regardless of status. Prohibiting discriminatory actions in all aspects affecting the sale, rental, or occupancy of housing. Ensuring that all neighborhoods have fair access to public facilities, supporting the infrastructure, safety, and community services that offer the opportunity for a high quality of life. Seeking to remedy the direct and disparate impacts on individuals individuals with respect to fair housing through the development and implementation of land use planning, municipal code, and administrative regulations and old programs. So as a part of our fair housing program, we've included a number of actions relative to ensuring that we address fair housing. So one of those being periodically report to the City Human Rights Commission and City Council on improving the status of fair housing opportunity in the community. Prepare administrative impediments to fair housing choice or fair housing assessment and implement its findings. Distribute information about fair and equal housing laws and resources in libraries, community centers, social justice, or social services offices and other public locations, and working with our equity and social justice community to develop and implement goals, policies, and initiatives to affirm affirmatively further fair housing.
David, on this one, and then it says other arbitrary factors. One thing that's come up a bit is just how animal-friendly, pet-friendly Palm Springs is in so many ways. But then, when it comes to housing, it's really hard to find a place that allows pets or they require very high pet rents, which seem really arbitrary because just because you have a pet doesn't mean you're going to screw up the apartment. You know, you can screw up the apartment even without a pet. So I'm just curious if there's anything that we could do, and this is maybe something for Jeff Ballinger at a later date, but I think part of fair housing is making sure that people who have a pet can get an apartment, you know, and not be denied just because someone's worried that there could be damage, but there could be damage regardless.
Yeah, we can work with the city attorney on if there's policies that we can include to address that.
I would be happy to look at that.
You can also look, we've discussed, at breed restrictions, which can also be a barrier too. I see Mayor Protam Middleton, and and just for the council, I think that we'll say most of the discussion until after the presentation. But if you have questions or comments on that specific item or what David's presenting now, please do so. Mayor Protam.
Okay, thank you, and I'll keep this very short. David, are we missing commas after the word age and gender?
Which page?
What I have is
Your presentation, David.
Your presentation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I do not see gender identity identified here.
You can include that.
Thank you.
Number four.
And I know this is just a presentation, but in the report, we also, our ordinance includes immigration status, non-discrimination ordinance as well. So we should be consistent, not just with state law, but we go beyond state law on these issues. So make sure we're consistent in fair housing with what our ordinance for non-discrimination includes because so we're consistent with city policy as well. Thank you.
Yeah, well, that's so that really is the kind of presentation that I wanted to go over with the commission or to the city council relative to the housing element. One important, well, as you read in the staff report, the land use element or the land use definitions and map are also part of this presentation because they are all interrelated when it comes to each of the land use definition or land use definitions and each of the land use land uses we've given to property in Palm Springs. So that's why we've also presented as part of the housing element, the land use definitions and the land use map. So we can get into that if the commission, if the council would like to, and then come back and discuss each of the the goals and policies and programs if that works. So updates to our land use definitions and descriptions, we've as you'll recall, when we undertook the general plan update, it was looked at as really an administrative update to an extent to address some of the plan development district process recommendations by the ad hoc committee, PDD subcommittee that were approved by city council back in July of twenty seventeen. So we're we've removed or revised the descriptions relative to the PDD process. And it was, so we've made those changes there. We've had some issues with consistency on really as it relates to some of the existing land uses and zoning already that were established previously. We have in our medium-density residential definition, doesn't specifically identify hotels and motels. So we've included that because historically, all of our medium-density residential designations have allowed hotel and motels and short hotels. So we just clarified that it needs to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So we've made that change to ensure that we are not excluding hotels where we historically have allowed them. Streamlining approval for residential and tourist resort commercials is another change that we've, you'll see in the land use revisions, description revisions. So we've removed the plan development district requirement and made it so that the process is not arduous for residential. We're allowing compatible rebuilding and remodeling of small hotels and the resort commercial. Some of these areas that we established this designation in two thousand and seven became non-conforming. So some of the smaller boutique historic hotels or motels that we've had in Palm Springs in either the tennis club neighborhood or the warm sands area have a higher density than what was established with the small hotel resort commercial land use designation. So with the change that we're making or recommending, we're allowing that those historic densities can continue. We're encouraging affordable housing production in our central business district and mixed-use land use designations. You can see that we've made some provisions to those descriptions to ensure that we are not creating more difficult process for these. more difficult process for these for projects within these designations. And then we're updating all of the description and target use ratios for our mixed use, each of the mixed use districts that we have. And so we've gone through, so we went through a number of those recommendations from our steering committee on all of these. So all the changes that you see here have been reviewed by the general plan steering committee and the planning commission. Relative to the map changes that we're looking at as a part of the land use plan, we've made some changes that are generally administrative in nature or refining some of the boundaries and alignments in our sloped areas to ensure that we have a consistent label or classification with the natural features. Making some refinements to ensure that we're consistent with the latest parcel lines. And we're making changes to reflect where right of way has changed and we have vacant streets. So one big area that you see on the south side of the airport, while it shows a large area that looks like a change, it's really just to reflect that the street is no longer part of the parcel, the parcel layer. The designations really haven't changed in that area. It's just that we've now filled in the area where the street was located, but that impacts a larger parcel line or a larger number. It shows on a large parcel. We're making changes to more accurately reflect what has been built in certain areas. So some to make sure that we have the correct density to be consistent with on the ground conditions so that properties are not non-conforming. And then implementing changes to be consistent with the Section 14 plan, which was approved in the mandate in 2014. So that document required some land use changes as part of that update. We do have a proposed change relative to mixed use designation to high density residential in the artist colony. And so that's relative to the housing element. That's the, those were really the processes that we discussed earlier in Table 332. We've also had some public comment requests as it relates to land use changes. We have the desert Highland gateway requests for changing some neighborhood community commercial to mixed use and medium density residential. I have a map to show some of those areas. They've also made some recommendation about rezoning some parcels from R1D back to RGA 6, which had occurred back when the city did an update to the general plan in 1993. Back in 93, when we changed, or we updated the general plan, there was downzoning from RGA 6 to R1D. So there's a request that makes some changes relative to the zoning there.
Excuse me, David, can you explain what the difference is for the public? I think we may know it, but I doubt they understand those terms.
Yeah, so the R1D is a single family zone. And RGA 6 is a residential garden apartment zone at six units to the acre. R1D is a smaller lot, single family zone, minimum of 7,500 square feet lot. So it is strictly limited to each lot to one house, whereas the RGA 6 zone permits up to six units to the acre. So there's some areas within desert Highland that were changed or downzoned from RGA 6 in the early to mid 90s to R1D. So there's been a request from desert Highland to revert back from the R1D to RGA 6 in certain locations. And so really that, that can be achieved through a zone change. The actual land use designation doesn't need to be modified because generally the density for these, both of these zones is the same. So that's something that we can look at as a program as a part of our housing element though, to address additional density if the council would like to see that. And then, as I said, the neighborhood community commercial to mixed use and medium density residential. Show that. So that's here, Tranview and Indian Canyon. This is the request here to change it to what you see here in red, to change it to mixed use. And then what you see here in blue is to change it to medium density residential. The other request that we received, and I should say the planning commission recommended that these, for the desert Highland recommendation, request be accommodated. So if the council agreed with that, we would include that, those changes as part of our housing element and land use plan. The next comment or request we had was to modify a parcel off of the 10 freeway south of Tipton Road in the Whitewater area. The commission was not in support of that change. So that's this parcel here, roughly 95 acres of land. And it is currently designated open space desert. Next request that we have from the public was to change open space to low density residential for the Bel Air Greens property and modify the circulation element relative to Skeet Avenue. The commission deferred or was not in support of making this recommendation. So this is the Bel Air Greens parcel here. We also received some survey responses to the mapping activity that we had as a part of our community workshop earlier this month. So the recommend, or the comments that we got on the map are really kind of three areas. We had the westerly end of Taku, some recommendations to change these properties. The commission thought that that should be submitted as an individual request from the owner. So that was not part of the recommendations from the commission. The other comment we got relative to these, the cluster over here is on the animal shelter property. We have a proposed update to change that from open space parks recreation to public quasi-public. And there was some concern that the parcel change would eliminate the possibility of allowing the animal shelter to continue to use the outdoor spaces as accessory to the, to the shelter. We would just note that that is, that the proposed change will not impact that land use with that operation. The parcel is for the most part developed with the animal shelter, the ABOB center, and then solar panels. So it is really more reflective of what a public quasi-public use would be because it's not an open space park recreation. So we don't believe that, that, that really, you know, in the event that the animal shelter chose to expand the facility, the public quasi-public would be more in line. Public quasi-public land use would be more in line with that future operation as well. And then lastly, we had a request to increase mixed use designations in this area off of Vista Chino. The, to create more walkable environment for residents. The potential challenge with that is most of this land is residential and it's built out. Potentially, we could accommodate that in the center off of Sunrise and Vista Chino. That has, you know, that currently has some undeveloped parcels within that shopping center. So we think, you know, hopefully we can address that comment with the area that is currently mixed use multi-use in the general plan. And we've received some other public comments from some other parties that we didn't, weren't able to include here. So if there's any additional comments that we, council would like us to consider, we certainly are happy to look at those. And then the last thing that we wanted to go over is the buildout projections. So with the land use plan, we're able to see what the potential is for the full buildout of the city. All cities in California must identify the buildout projections and development projections in their general plan. It does help us to plan for our, you know, community services, roads, water, parks, recreation, et cetera. And it is used when we prepare the environmental analysis that is required under the California Environmental Quality Act. So we do have to have the land use plan close to where we want to see it in order to ensure that the housing can be adopted later this year or early 2022. We, in terms of what information we use to establish the land use plan, we looked at the US Census, the American Community Survey, county assessor data, SCAG data, and the California Department of Finance. So we have a number of sources that we use to determine our numbers. And what we did is we looked at existing on the ground conditions, what we had in our 2007 general plan and what, with the changes that we're proposing, what is the ultimate buildout of the city? And in the, what we see in the changes that we're showing in the land use map are a demonstrated commitment to increasing our housing production facilitated through modifications to the TRC or tourist resort commercial land use, revising target ratios in our mixed use areas. Transition of sites to residential for some of the specific changes that we're looking at for the housing element. And what that, what that translates into and the trade off is, is there will be a minor decrease in non-residential square footage and jobs. We are accounting for more accessory drawn unit production. And we are satisfying the state requirements for our housing element. It's important to note that there was a state law, SB 330, that requires that cities and counties have no reduction in the total housing units below our January 2018 numbers. So we really can't increase or revise land uses and make them commercial if they were not previously commercial or we didn't achieve some sort of offset for housing somewhere else in the city from our January 2018 numbers. So as I mentioned, when we looked at our projected buildout, we took our existing, what we understood as the existing conditions at the, really the parcel level. And that is, we got JAS data to compare from Department of Finance, SCAG, and US Census. So the total number of housing units that we have, excuse me, is 35,524 housing units with a total households, total households 2,000, 23,197. And that's an occupancy rate of 65%. We have a population of 46,162 currently and a total non-residential square footage of 20,415,627 square feet, which translates into about 28,000 jobs, 28,531 is our current conditions. In 2007, when we adopted our general plan, we had a projected buildout with 51,000 housing units, 48,000 households, and about 94,643 population. Our non-residential square footage was estimated to be built out at 34,344,000 square feet and about 56,000 jobs. And so as, as I mentioned in the previous slide, with our proposed land use plan, our housing unit would increase above our 2007 numbers, roughly 3,500 units. Our households occupancy rate at 95% occupancy would increase a few thousand. And the total population would increase about 6,000 from our 2007 95% occupancy rate for population. And also, as I mentioned, a minor reduction in the total square footage from 34 million down to 33 million, so roughly a 1 million square foot reduction. And then a couple of thousand reduction in the total jobs in the event the city was fully built out with a 95% occupancy. So it's important to note, as I said, this, we will be in compliance with the Senate bill that we have no net loss of residential unit capacity. So we are increasing our unit capacity. So we will be in compliance with our state, with state laws. And so that's really our presentation. I'm happy to go into what kind of we have to address for our housing element. We have to submit the document to HCD by July 30th to ensure that they have a six day review timeframe as permitted or required by state law. Once we get comments back from them, we have to address and incorporate those comments and submit a second draft to HCD. And we expect to bring forward the final documents, planning mission, city council at public hearings for adoption at the end of this year, and if not by the end of this year, by December or by, excuse me, by January of 2022. And this is really just a high level overview of some of the things that we look, we're looking for, or our schedule is for the general plan update over the next year. So housing element, we're really tackling that right now. In the fall, we want to make sure that we address and confirm the desired vision and priorities for the city. We have to prepare our environmental analysis to, to, as we look to adopt the housing element. We want to, we'll be updating our goals and policies of the land use elements that we are doing updates to. And we will be addressing HCD comments on the housing element in the fall. And then as we move into the spring and winter, or the winter and spring of 2022, the we're preparing the environmental analysis for public review, finalizing the housing element and holding our hearings for the final general plan update. So with that, I will conclude my staff report and staff is here to answer questions, take comments, and receive feedback from the council.
Thank you so much, David. So if I can just, we can go back one slide. So I know that we are considering this for the first time before the first, this is the first round of review before the deadline for HCD. I know we're already an hour and a half into our meeting. So what is the specific feedback and direction that we can give right now? And what is the direction and the input and changes that we might be able to make on the second draft? Just being thoughtful that honestly, we could discuss the housing crisis and homelessness crisis and the need for housing and all the issues that our community raised for, you know, 20 hours. So what do you need from us right now that we won't be able to change very easily after HCD review?
Certainly. So the really the, one of the important things for the housing element is our strategy to address the arena numbers. So we have a land use, a land plan that shows all of the land uses throughout the city. We want to make sure that our strategy is one that the council thinks is appropriate. Otherwise, if there's significant changes to the land plan in terms of creating higher density properties elsewhere or looking for other vacant sites, that, that could be something that we would really need to address now versus later on. But we think, as I said, we think we've devised a strategy that will, will work for not only Palm Springs, but what the state is looking for in terms of sites that are appropriate for housing. So that's one thing. The other thing is we have established the goals, policies, and programs. established the goals, policies, and programs. So if there's additional policies or programs that the council would like us to include, we can, it would be good to have those additional suggestions at this point. Because that, you know, we can always add to those things, but we don't have to. We certainly don't want to reduce the programs that we have to achieve our housing goals. So if there's additional comments that the council has in terms of modifying or adding to those at this point, that would be helpful for us.
Thank you. That's really helpful. So with that, we will go to council member comments and questions, council member courts.
Great. So I can sort of go through my comments and questions quickly. What's the best method? Or Flynn, or the mayor, or Jeff, because I know you have some legal issues too that will come up.
Council member Coors, if you would just go ahead and go through your list of questions and issues, so that way we can note those down and feed those on to our consultant. That would be great.
Okay. The first one I have relates to one of the properties that discusses rezoning, which is currently, which is a property the city bought to have a college of the desert in Desert Highlands to benefit that neighborhood.
If we're going to talk about College of the Desert, then I need to recuse.
So I thought I would do it first, so.
Yeah. And so everybody can comment on that. That'd be great. And then I can come back.
So let me go ahead and jump in there, council member Coors. I'm aware of the concern. I've discussed this with Jeff Ballinger. What we will do is we can look at revising that. As David indicated in his presentation, we do have a buffer of a number of units. And so as we look at resolution to the College of the Desert issue, I believe that we have enough to still meet our RENA numbers. And I don't think that'll be an issue. We do want to keep in mind, however, what the long-term use of that property should be, and perhaps give some indication of what you would prefer to see on that site.
Sure. And so just as I understand, so I think there were mostly the two hundred and fifty or so lower-income units that I don't think the developer plans to build, who has put in an entitlement request, but I'm not sure on what the most current submission he did is. Those would be taken out of this?
Potentially, if that's the direction of the council, yes.
Okay. So just for public and council benefit, given, I think I've been a liaison, liaison on this with different council members over my five and a half years on council. And I realize some staff in planning may not know all the conversations we had since it's been discussed in closed session on numerous occasions. And currently, Mayor Holstich and I are the liaisons. It started with myself and former council member Chris Mills. But before any of us were on council, when College of the Desert was looking for a West Valley campus, the city really wanted this on that property in the Desert Highlands Gateway State neighborhood, as there's been long need for educational opportunity and economic development in that neighborhood. The neighborhood really wanted this there. It would have spurred, you know, not only the educational opportunities, but jobs, local retail, restaurants, a grocery store, all the things we've been trying every other avenue since to do that. So the city purchased it for the college as a way to get them to build it there, which they agreed to do. With the only consideration they gave us is they would build a college for it. So I think there are some legal issues about whether that, they still should have that property, because there was no consideration. There's also a deed restriction that only allows educational currently. So it's not just rezoning, it's also a deed restriction issue in order for us to possibly get this. I know I've met with a developer who wants to build basically, I think it's Mountain Gate Three there now. And Mayor Holstich and I, starting with Councilmember Holstich, have met with the developer, most recently just a couple of months ago, the city attorney on a former assistant city manager. And throughout, we've been very clear that this was done to benefit Desert Highlands Gateway Estates and the surrounding neighborhoods. And that's why we did this, and that's still our goal. And my understanding from staff is the college does not want to even meet with the liaisons to discuss this. And they just want to sell it. And it's now probably worth three or four times the $2 million we paid for it. And at least the mayor and I have talked, I can't sort of share closed session conversations, but the mayor and I as liaisons in the meeting with the developers have been very clear that this property, if it is going to turn into housing, which I'm open to, needs to be done so in a way that really benefits that community, and also as a way to do reparations for the people who were evicted from Section 14, many of whom moved to what was then nothing but dirt and built a new community because of the city's actions. And they've lost millions, potentially hundreds of millions in generational wealth because of being evicted, often bulldozed their homes on Section 14, and were forced to find someplace else to live. And so council has pulled this from the agenda around five years ago when this was requested, and obviously have not agreed to put it back on the agenda until that gets worked out. So while I can give direction that I'm open to the housing or multi-use, or what the residents want, it also needs to include, as they asked for, either inclusionary zoning or use of the funds. And if we got the land back and could sell it, we could put different deed restrictions. Use of the funds to, whether it's cover down payments, whether it's to make sure it includes worker housing and low-income housing, but the things the community wants. And so I request that this be taken out. And I know we need to probably vote on this first. And that I think it's time, you know, as liaisons, I think we've been waiting and waiting to hear back for the city attorney from the meeting we had several months ago, that we may need to communicate sort of our legal concerns or position to the college and get this resolved. We can't just, it's been put off hoping, you know, we could get a resolution for at least five years. And I think we just need to probably call the issue now, especially given we don't even know, you know, the other campus, they abandoned this to move to Takwitz, and that's their right. But it wasn't a city decision that they didn't build there. That's where we wanted them to build on this property. And currently, as we've all read, Palm Springs campus is being reevaluated. So we don't even know if the other one's going to happen or what timeline or anything. So I just think we may need to proceed to try and move this forward as soon as possible, because that would answer, I think, the questions that planning has in order to do this. But for now, I would suggest we take that out. I have ideas for other things that I think we've mentioned to increase density, but I'll bring those up as we go through the report, once Grace comes back, Councilmember Garner.
Well said. I strongly agree with your comments.
And if I can make a comment on that COD property as well. You know, if, if, if we're really looking to have it spur kind of economic development and spur some investment into the neighboring community of Desert Highlands, I think on page 164, policy number HS 5.8, we need to remove the word gentrification and just put in, because we're gentrifying it. But we need to remove, we need to keep in stuff like limiting displacement, the bad part of gentrification of it, and just be more specific and just get rid of the word gentrification and put in limiting displacement, preserving affordable housing, and then keeping those elements with it.
Just to confirm, so is there consensus among the council members relative to the direction on College of the Desert?
Yes, and I agree with Councilmember Woods' comment on deleting the word gentrification and simply identifying the negative elements.
Okay, so noted. And then we will confer also with our consultant and with Mr. Ballinger. Councilmember Coors, you had other comments?
Yes, but the rest of my comments, I can start doing, but we should bring back Councilmember Garner for those. Since they won't involve College of the Desert specifically. Welcome back. So should I just go through mine there, or does someone else? I'm happy. Okay. So, so first on RENA numbers. You know, I was a little concerned without discussing about any specific property that, you know, we don't want to push all our density into lower-income neighborhoods, but want to spread that out throughout the city. And especially closer to transit, closer to bus lines. I think that is something we've discussed at council. I know when council discussed housing, and I know Councilmember Woods and I as liaisons sort of, although we really didn't have much input into this plan, but we did mention a few things that aren't here as options. So, you know, really looking at whether we should allow multi-unit, four units in all zones near transit with reduced parking. That will spread it out throughout the city. It's near transit, which allows us not to have the parking. You know, it can still be in the exact same height and setbacks that we currently have. But you could put a four-unit housing next door to me, as far as I'm concerned, although my neighbors may disagree, on the same footprint, and I love that. I think it would make a much more integrated, you know, engaging community. And, you know, the state senate passed something that pretty much eliminates single-family housing. We don't know what's going to happen in the assembly or the governor, but it did pass last year, just not with enough time before the midnight happened on the last day of session. So if that bill passes, I think everyone will meet their RENA numbers throughout the state. But I do think, in my view, I'd like to see it be up to four units near transit, and other council members may have different issues. I know, I think it was Councilmember Woods and I, but it might have been the whole council. We talked about with the Chair of the Planning Commission, upzoning in shopping centers that have a lot of extra parking to build apartment buildings as a good way to get density. And so I think that would be something we'd want to, I would like to see included here. I think a lot of those then are also on bus lines and walkable. I think that could be good. I think we've discussed doing a housing waiver, because I know we did an RFP for the Gene Autry site that we got from grid development. That's five and a half acres. We can have a lot of density there that would clearly, you know, I'd like to see us excel, exceed our RENA numbers, not just have a buffer, but so we actually do it. I think we really, I know not a lot of cities want to do this. I know we want more housing. We need more housing. It's the only way we're going to get affordable housing for people in our city. So I think that's another thing I'd like to see. And the other thing, just on more density sort of spread out throughout the city, is we look at this before it comes back for final. I think we want to, you know, one of the benefits of having more density in certain areas near transit, in addition to the environmental, all the environmental benefits of people not using cars and people being able to use public transit and walking to retail and restaurants, is it allows us to really then focus on what are our most important open space, right? If, otherwise, you know, it's very hard to have as much open space as I think a lot of us would like to have if we don't have denser housing in other areas near transit. So I, you know, I know we've gotten requests, keep this open, keep this open, keep this open, often newer people live and, because of environmental sensitivity. But, you know, anywhere we in the desert do new housing, there are going to be some environmental wildlife issues. So, you know, denser housing on transit corridors helps us keep more open space. And then I'll quickly go through, and I'm using page numbers in the staff report as opposed to the plan, so council can follow and staff can follow. So on page four of the staff report, it talks about eliminating planned development districts in multi-use and central business district designations, but not elsewhere. And my only concern is, is that to still have, why to still have them in single-family residential? Because it does concern me that some of those, the areas we're eliminating planned development districts are more in some of our mid and lower-income neighborhoods. And you want me to just go through all these, just so you have them?
Yes, please.
Okay. On page five, we discussed, on page 28, just want to note, apartment rents increased more than fifty percent in the last decade. And compared to household incomes, asking rents rose five times faster than changes in the median household income. And I just want to point it out, because I think we really want to figure out how we're going to address this, not just for the state RENA numbers, but as Councilmember Garner already said, you know, we have those people falling through the gap who can no longer afford housing, but don't qualify for assistance. And I know there aren't easy answers, and we can't come up with them today, but I know we have, you know, Affordable Housing Subcommittee, and I think, you know, continuing to work on that's going to be extremely important. And it just highlights the serious need we also have for apartment buildings in the city. And I think, you know, that's come up. On page 58, it says the city, this is actually a question, that the city continues to issue building permits for housing on Indian and non-Indian land. But currently, land ownership patterns, we do not include tribal trust land as a means to achieve RENA numbers. Is that even if they're planning to build housing? But just, and is that a legal requirement, or is that just something we're doing?
No, it is a legal requirement. And speaking with the tribe, they can't be included in our RENA numbers for tribal trust land.
Even though our residents who will live on that land are included?
Yep.
Okay, so that makes, adds more challenges to us, of course, but that's okay. On page 62, the staff report, which I appreciate, we note all the waivers up to a hundred percent for affordable housing, fifty percent for market-rate apartments. Have we, and if we haven't, can we do more to educate builders, not just who usually build in the Coachella Valley, but actually promote that we do that, right? That's a real incentive to builders that we put in to get that kind of housing built. So I don't know what efforts we do, but I want to encourage we do more of that. The next issue I raise, which is multifamily housing. On transitional and supportive housing for those exiting homelessness, just a question, are these included in our RENA numbers? If they get built?
Yes. So like this sunrise too will be included.
Okay. One concern I just have is, we'll allow, you know, allowing it in all zones, I agree with, but it says consistent with the allowed housing in such zones, which again is concentrating this in more mid to lower-income neighborhoods, right? And so again, looking at doing this in all zones, as long as it's, you know, on a transit corridor, which is critical for this kind of housing, is something I'd like us to look into. Let's see. On page 79, it says the medium and higher density zones, which are R2, R3, and R4, provide adequate density and development standards to support affordable housing for lower incomes. You know, I want to make sure we're not eliminating R1 zones on that, as I mentioned. And again, I think being within whatever, a walking, a reasonable walking distance, whether it's a half mile or whatever is appropriate for transit would really help, because we're not seeing enough affordable housing for lower-income households. So it's actually not adequate. I think it's zoned adequately, but we're not getting it, right? So we need to actually get it. I know we discussed displacement issues briefly already. But, you know, we, one thing we didn't mention is we did, as a council, and if we did, I apologize that I missed it, mentioned that we did do eviction subsidies when there were conversions of apartments, just so the public's aware of that in the report, but it might be good to note that in the report if it is not there. I know I've read three times, but I was reading it for different things each time, so I might have missed that. And I really like the, whatever we can do to encourage some of these smaller hotels who want to develop into market-rate or subsidized apartments. I think that's a good thing, and maybe coming up ways to incentivize that. But I also want to ask, can we prohibit the conversion of apartment buildings into hotels, hotels as well as condos, which was raised earlier? And what's allowed? I know that also Councilmember Garner and I, I think we've brought this up a couple of times, talked about preventing rental units with long-term renters, you know, people at least yearly, who have been there a year or more, including in single-family houses, not to be able to get a vacation rental permit within some period of time, because what we are seeing is, we are seeing some long-term housing start to be purchased by part-time people, which they're allowed to do, but then they're maximizing, using it as a vacation rental. And so we're losing long-term rental housing, which is resulting in an increase in rental costs. So I really want us to look at options there and whether we do need to cap the number of vacation rental units, because, right, we can't lose, what we can't do, in my view, is lose more rental housing and affordable housing for our residences. We're trying to build more and coming up with all these incentives. So I really would like us to look on that. The other thing that was mentioned in the staff report was making a change to allow, you know, hotel motels in residential zones if it's compatible with the neighborhood. So one thing is, we probably need to get compatibility, compatible defined. And two, I'm not sure I support that, because I'd much rather see in those medium-density residential housing, medium-density housing. And so I think we would need to discuss that more as a council. I think I have a couple more things. Just for the public, we can see the neighborhoods where 51% of housing, households earn below 50% of the median income are in three general areas, sort of in the northern area, Desert Highlands and Racket Club West, in the central area, Baristo, Midtown Warm Sands and Sunrise Park, and southeast Demuth Rimrock Melody Ranch. In these neighborhoods, 20 to 30% of residents live below the poverty line. So I just want to highlight that for the public. That covers a lot of our, most of our council districts. And, you know, that's a really tough thing for people to try and live, live like that. So I just did want, you know, us to identify those neighborhoods and maybe as we, you know, continue to do public outreach, really, you know, highlight to those neighborhoods, we want their input as well. And the last thing I had is whether we can require, you know, one thing I've seen on council is often when we have multi-unit zones, we end up getting small lot planned development district requests for not very dense residential housing. And can we require that in the MU district, we actually have mixed use built, right? You know, the ground floors being retail or that's frontage on major thoroughfares, and then we're getting apartments or housing above or behind, and make that an actual requirement? Because we'll get denser, you know, dense, and maybe denser housing, because we'll get denser housing, which we need, and we'll, also, it's good for the environment. People won't drive as far. People like being able to walk to things. So that was the last thing I had, and thank you. I hope that was understandable. I'm trying to be fast.
And let me just jump in really quickly. Council member Coors, I appreciate you doing those in rapid fire. We've been making notes and there's a couple of comments I just want to make really quickly. Some of these things that you're suggesting, for example, on looking at making shopping centers more dense, mixed use, incorporating housing there, you may not see those come up in the housing element, where we would put those is in the land use element. One of the reasons why HCD or the state has an issue with counting housing units in mixed use districts or mixed use projects, and so it doesn't fulfill our Rina numbers per se, even though it does address a housing need. And so you will see some of the comments that you're making show up in the land use element as opposed to the housing element. I just want you to be aware of that, that just because it's not in the housing element doesn't mean we're not addressing it somewhere else. And then there's some other things, but I'll go ahead and turn back over to the mayor so we can continue to take your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Woods, and then council member Garner.
Thank you. Am I off mute? Yes. Can, you know, you, there's some sites to be rezoned, several of those sites on the map that's on page 132 or 5C-144. It was very hard to read that map. That map is very small. David, I think you had a blow up of the area that is around Racket Club. Do you have that, that you could blow that up? There's a method to my asking here.
Yes, council member Woods, one moment.
Thank you. While he's pulling that up, in an R3 zone, can you also have mixed use or is, or not? Can you have commercial along with residential in R3?
Very limited, and I wouldn't consider it to be mixed use per se. There are certain provisions to allow office uses in multifamily, but it's very limited. So if that's something that council wants to see, we would like to take that comment now.
Okay. So I'm looking at the area, I can't point to it, I'm sorry for the east, but a little, a little further to the west from where your finger is, that whole area there that you're just, is being changed. What is the, you know, what are the densities that is being changed to? South of Racket Club, north of Vistacino. Yeah, right where your hand is and just above that.
Yes. So this is proposed to change from mixed use to high-density residential. And so this is one of the housing candidate sites that we felt, it's an undeveloped, it's a series of undeveloped parcels that is large enough that could accommodate housing. It is close to the transit. So we felt that this was a good candidate site, because it's undeveloped, it has a lot, it has the services, it has transit. So this is a proposed change from mixed use to high-density residential. The orange one here is to reflect the current, the current use of this property. This is the Icon property, north of the North Gate 111 Center.
And what is, what is the pink? I want to, the pink just north of the brown where the hand is?
This is the mixed use designation.
That's mixed use? So that doesn't include towards our, doesn't, doesn't give us Rina numbers then?
Correct.
If it's mixed use. And then just to the east of where your hand is or where the pointer is, that orange, what is that?
Medium-density residential.
Okay. And on the high density and the medium density, what are we looking at in, as far as like stories go? How many stories can we go there with that designation, with medium density?
So, yeah, so typically the, the medium density is going to be the R2, R3, well, typically it's an R2 zone, which is two stories for residential. The R3 zone, which would be the high-density residential, I believe it is also two stories, but that's all defined in our zoning code.
Okay, okay. So the reason I'm asking is that we have Boulders and Crescendo, which obviously has housing number, Rina numbers on it, does it not?
It's not utilized in meeting our, our Rina numbers, no. It's established as residential right now, but it's not, it doesn't, it's not necessary to achieve our above moderate numbers.
So if that's the case and it's not included in Rina numbers, we could change it to open states? And when we get to the land use element part of it?
We need to make sure that there's no net loss in housing units over 2018 levels, and we should make that up based on the changes we're proposing as part of this general plan update.
So, very good. And what I was going to suggest is that on the, the brown area, the medium, the high, high-density residential, is that seems like an excellent opportunity, as well as the medium density just above it, as well as the mixed use next to it. It seems like that whole area there between Indian and Palm Canyon that you're circling would be really great as a five-story. I mean, it just, there's no single family around it that's being impacted. It seems like we can get a lot higher density. We can move the density off of Boulders and Crescendo to here. We would have no, no loss of housing, but yet we would have opportunities for a much denser housing and more inclusionary housing or whatever we decide to do. That would be my suggestion, is look at a little higher density there. Thank you.
Council member Garner, thank you.
Thank you. And just would, regarding council member Coors' comments regarding the upzoning in parking lots and near bus routes, just want to point, I agree with that. And so generally, when I was looking through this, one thing I noticed is that there wasn't a lot of information in here about Latino residents, or especially in the northern part of the city with, we have two mobile home parks and affordable housing project, and that information is really left out. But we did have residents from those areas come to our meetings and submit comments. And so I just was hoping that we could kind of update throughout, because a lot of times it says Desert Highlands Gateway Estates and Demuth Park, but it doesn't address, and it says other various areas, but we actually have a concentration in the city that has issues right there. Especially when there was discussion of disadvantaged areas and dry utilities. You know, Golden Sands specifically has no cell, hardly any cell service, and they have serious issues with internet connectivity, which made it very difficult for them this last year with, with the school-aged children. There are people who have multiple routers and it's, I mean, it's unnecessary, you would think it would be unnecessary for a mobile home, but it's just such a dead zone that everybody's struggling to make it work. And so just throughout, if that could be kind of addressed. I'm also just really anxious, as well as I know all of you are, for the 2020 census numbers. I have been told that this document would be updated with 2020 census numbers, and I'm hoping that once it is, that we could get a presentation on that, especially where, wherever is, is different. One thing I noticed is that overcrowding was listed as, I think only 2% overcrowding in Palm Springs, but that's probably one of the number one things that I hear, especially about the mobile homes, is overcrowding in the mobile homes. So I'm very curious again to see what those updated numbers are, because there might be more of an issue than we currently have documented. And just another thing, generally comments, I was really impressed with the history section of the document, but then there was still some, some discrepancies in how the Filipino community was addressed, and then also the neighborhood area being addressed as, not being addressed as veterans tract. I understand the continuity of use in Demuth Park because of the neighborhood organization now, but in terms of the history section, it was called veterans tract at the time that it was developed. For policy, it's mentioned that we do not do a housing conditions survey, so we don't have any indication of housing that's, you know, technically inhabitable or needs updates. And so I would like the city to, to start doing that and find out where it is that we can fix, update properties. I know that David mentioned that there is, that's in one of our goals, is to do that, but I think the housing condition survey could help us meet those goals and making sure these properties are updated. And along with that, that we're making sure that there's no retaliation by landlords. There's a lot of people who are worried that if they complain about a substandard condition that they're, they're then going to get kicked out. So if there's a policy that we need to implement to make sure that that doesn't happen, I want to, I want us to do that. With the goal regarding special needs housing, I just wanted to make sure that when we're doing that work, that we're in coordination with organizations and individuals who can actually speak personally or with expert knowledge on those topics, because I know that that's, it's a tough area when you don't have those needs to, to really take into account all of the things that come into play. For rental housing, it stated here in the document that 56% of renters in Palm Springs overpay for housing. That's huge. And I'd like to see us tackle that in a more robust way. I know I've brought up rent control before. I understand that we have state limitations on that, but I also know that we have little areas where we can, can do something about it. And I think 56% is, is just horrible, and even if we could make it 53%, that's better than, than nothing. And just any other way that we can possibly assist in helping, because there are so many people at rent and 50, I mean, that's just, that number is horrible. I mentioned to staff already, creating an ADU rental, I think they called it ADU rental registry. I wanted to just have, be able to provide residents with a list of available housing. Obviously, people would have to opt in, but it's hard to find out who has ADUs, and I know that some of, sometimes it's because they're renting to family or to friends, so they don't post it. But as we're seeing hopefully an increase in these units, I think it would be helpful to connect residents to it. And just in general, if we could connect residents to affordable housing, I, I actually almost daily look at the housing cost throughout our city and different rental sites, and there's not really one site that captures all of the rentals that are available, and even then, we just don't have that many. And so it would be great to be able to provide an easy resource to residents who are looking for housing in some way. In terms of preservation, we've talked about historic preservation in this city. There are historic properties in our city that are not on our historic preservations list, and a lot of that has to do with the financial concerns. I know that First Baptist Church, which is part of the very first planned development district in Palm Springs and included the Child Development Center, they're trying to raise funds to refurbish, you know, their, their church, and they're just really struggling with doing that. And it's a historic building, and it could probably easily pass through council to be indicated as such, but they have no too low funds to actually make that happen. And I think that we don't want to lose out on, on his, these historic properties, just because the person who owns them or the entity that owns them doesn't have the means. So connecting those resources, I know we have a lot of wealthy preservationists in our city that maybe would be interested in working on that and figuring out how we can contribute to preserving lots of different places. Let's see. In terms of the housing designations, the Desert Highlands designation with the multi-use and the RG6, I think would, would be great. I don't think we should change the Whitewater I-10. I think it should stay desert land designation. And then the Beller Greens, I think, you know, having residential there would be great in terms of affordable housing, because it is near a park, it's near transit, it's just a really good location to have affordable housing. And I think that that would be a good space. I think those were the only land changes that it comments on. Just one more thing. Oh, there was on the page, the actual page number 51, it talked about how for market rate, rate projects, land in Palm Springs, the cost of land in Palm Springs is comparable to adjacent cities or sometimes even lower. And, and it says the cost of land and improvement should not limit the financial feasibility of developing market rate housing. And so next door to Palm Springs, we have a housing development that came up not too long ago in Cathedral City. The houses start at $300,000, but obviously every project that's come forward for us that's market rate is $600,000. So if we're looking at these lands, the land costs are the same, building costs are the same, yes, we have required different costs through the city, but it's not substantially greater than any other city. And yet, you know, our market rate is higher because of our designation, because of who, you know, our, what our city's name. So that's just something that I think we hear a lot from developers, is that they can't build things that cost $300,000 in Palm Springs, and at least what we have listed here, that, that's kind of not true. So I just wanted to, to point that out as something that I'm concerned about. And I'm not interested, you know, as we saw from this, we already have enough housing in terms of the more than moderate income. We, it's just moderate and below that we need more of. And so it seems good policy for us to not approve projects that don't fit into the housing element, or the housing numbers that we need. And I think that's it for now.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Yeah, you anticipated. Well, I want to, I want to try to keep this as short. The, I'm very supportive of- The, I'm very supportive of most of what I've heard. I'd like to get a clarification on the change that was considered for Bel Air Greens and for the commercial project up at the far north end near the freeway. If we leave those in place as they currently are, do we still have the ability at a later date to come back and revisit those designations at a time when we actually can have a truly in-depth conversation with everyone regarding how they are designated?
Yes, absolutely. And that was the concern of the planning commission is that both of those would need additional community input and discussion and would not be appropriate to do as part of the general plan, but we can do those later.
I think that's really important that we, we know that there is going to be a tremendous amount of interest and I'm glad we'll be able to come back. There has been a tremendous amount of conversation nationally, if not internationally, on single-family housing and zoning regarding single-family housing. I don't want to revisit all of the history of the use of single-family housing. But we have seen some cities and communities move away from single-family housing. I have personally not seen in any of the literature or any of the reports after many, many hours of debate and conversation that the removal of single-family housing has actually produced new housing. And before we take any leaps that would significantly alter the character of some of our historic residential neighborhoods, I think we need to have some clear evidence that there would be a constructive change in the number of homes that are actually being constructed. And if someone has that information out there, I'm certainly anxious to read it. But notwithstanding all of the debate, I've not seen that this debate has actually resulted in additional homes being built. And that's what we need to do is build homes. So picking up on that theme, one of the things that I think we do need to do is reach out to those who finance new home construction, those who build new homes, those who develop projects and find out from them what are the impediments to the construction and development of new housing across all price points in our city. So that we don't just simply develop a plan for new homes and new housing across all ranges, but we actually see those homes that we put in our plans getting built. And so we need to, we need to make sure that our plan works. There's always going to be conversation in our community about vacation rentals and the impact of vacation rentals. And I'm certainly supportive of looking at a, taking action regarding the conversion of long-term rental housing to vacation rentals. But just simply placing a cap on the number of vacation rentals does not directly impact the conversion of long-term rentals. So I think we need to make sure that any actions that we take are going to have the impact that we're trying to achieve. I support adding additional density in areas along transit lines, directly along transit lines. And I think Councilmember Wood's comments regarding looking at height in certain areas is something that we're going to need to do. But that needs to be done very carefully with reach out to our communities and to our neighborhoods. Low density is something that is, or excuse me, low height is something that is of historic presence in Palm Springs and something that for so many of our individuals, they purchased homes here because of wanting to protect the views that they have. And I think we need to be very careful and strategic as we consider additional height. One of the areas that I would like us to push for more development is using some of our vacant land to expand the number of mobile home parks that are in our city. Most of the mobile home parks that are in our city are ones that are occupied by individuals that couldn't afford to buy into the, into some of our single-family and multifamily neighborhoods and provide an incredibly positive living environment for individuals. So, and I can't find that we've built a new mobile home park in Palm Springs in quite a number of years. And something that I think we should try to incent, particularly as we see the development of small homes and the increase in the acceptance and attractiveness of manufactured housing in many neighborhoods. Lastly, we did receive a public comment regarding the Palm Hills area and desire to change the designation of Palm Hills. I think the people of Palm Springs have been very clear that they do not want to see Palm Hills developed. I certainly do not and would like us to take any actions that we can to ensure that that area remains open space in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Corrus.
Just, I have lots of responses to all of that. But just quickly on Palm Hills, since it's the first time it's brought up, just for the city attorney, given that it's owned open space and it's not publicly owned, that would be legal taking, is my understanding. And we'd have to actually buy it. So I'm not sure it's appropriate at this point to rezone it. I know there was a ballot measure and the development was rejected that was proposed. That doesn't mean, and that was, you were getting on 20 years, 18 years, and nothing's come back to us. And we have the right to deny projects that we don't support. But I think rezoning it without really a lot of legal things and what the impacts are is not something we should discuss today, but the city attorney went away in just because I'm concerned on the, you know, it becomes a taking issue, we get into litigation and would likely lose, in my view. And I don't want you to give an opinion on your view because you're the city attorney and I'm not.
No, I agree. I think to the extent we're designating it to a use that they can't develop, we run a serious risk of potential takings there.
And again, my point was that we should take what action we can.
And just on that point, there is language in the land use element, which is not under consideration today about Palm Hills. What we will do is review that with the city attorney to make sure that that language is appropriate. Also, I understand from the Sierra Club that there is land close to Palm Hills, adjacent to Palm Hills, that has been transferred to the conservancy and we'll look at that as well.
Thank you. Other comments?
I agree with almost everything that's been said with a few minor exceptions. But I really appreciate Mayor Pro Tem Middleton's point that we want a housing element that results in housing. I think most of the council members made this point, right? We don't want to rubber stamp a plan that hasn't worked in the past. And so I know staff has heard that and the consultants that we work with have heard that. Because it's upsetting to even now see, you know, the past nearly four years I've been sitting here, a lot of projects that this council didn't approve, but were approved in the past that are on, you know, high-density residential that ended up as single-family homes. There's, you know, a number of projects that are like that. And so we're whittling down, you know, we can make this, these plans, but we really need to be, I think, aggressive in pursuing our housing element and arena numbers. I don't believe we met arena numbers for the last cycle. And so now we have a cycle that's 10 times more the units. So I really very much appreciate everyone's work to find strong policies that will result in housing. We cannot afford to sit here for the next, you know, until 2029. Imagine what the housing market is going to be like. It's already untenable for most of our residents. As Councilmember Garner noted, at least that we know of 56% of our renters are rent burdened, which is just much, much too high. So I agree with the change proposed by Councilmember Corrus and supported by Councilmember Garner to increase density and surrounding transit. I think Councilman, I heard Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, I think, say she agrees with that as well. So four units in single-family zones around transit. I would like to see us study and analyze increasing density throughout the city, not just around transit. You know, we don't have a very comprehensive transit system in our city, unlike a lot of the areas that state bills are relying on, like the Bay Area, where there's really effective transit and multiple options, right? I've represented people who, you know, you just can't take, when I started working here, you couldn't take a bus to Riverside to go to, you know, get benefits. So I just think we need to think a lot more thoroughly about areas in the city where increased density will work. You know, that's what residents are asking us for because they're asking us for ownership opportunities through mobile home parks, but through condos, through smaller homes. I mean, with our environment, environmental issues, we just can't afford to keep the old ways of doing things, the old model of huge lots, huge single-family residences on those lots. So I support those proposals. I agree with Mayor Pro Tem on Palm Hills for what we can do. I strongly agree with Councilmember Corrus' comments on the COD parcel and looking at what we can do and getting a formal meeting with COD to address those issues because our residents were promised a benefit and a value in that transaction and they deserve that. And so we will fight to make sure that they get their, you know, seat at the table and that we can do economic development in that area and not just dump high-density units in one area of the city. We need affordable housing, we need apartment complexes that actually pencil. We need high density throughout the city, in my district too, and throughout every district and not just in one. So I strongly support the comments around there. Very strongly support the community input that was submitted, especially through Desert Highlands by a Nihon of the Desert Inland Equity Partnership. Staff referenced their site recommendations, strongly support including those. And then one comment that I see was submitted that I don't think we've addressed yet is the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters asked for an inclusion of a local skilled and trained workforce in our work here. And I also think that's really important that we're thinking about economic development and housing. So agree with, I think, where the council direction is on the Whitewater area, that that should not be re-designated. On Bel Air Greens in my district, I agree, we very much need affordable housing throughout the city and throughout the districts. My community is, my residents in that district are strongly opposed and very much want to see Bel Air Greens be open space. And I know Oswett Land Trust is applying for millions of dollars in grant funding from the state and others to turn that into a preserve. So I do not want to, you know, that's a long conversation for the community to have everyone's input. But that's my position on Bel Air Greens. So with that, I know we talked a lot. And I do want to make sure that the mutual self-help programs that we've discussed and that we had callers call in. Thank you so much, by the way, to everyone who called in, who wrote in. We're relying on your comments to make all of these changes and we very much appreciate your expertise. So would love to see us invest in the mutual self-help programs for homeownership that the city can do. I agree with Councilmember Garner, we just can't rely on county programs that might not be, you know, real for our residents. And again, thank you to staff for your focus on habitability concerns. I've seen some of the worst housing that I've ever seen. And I've worked in the Bay Area and East Palo Alto and Coachella and Thermal and Metta. Residents in Palm Springs have very often, if you're a renter, very poor living conditions, without AC, without, you know, with mold, with infestations. So we need to do a lot more to invest in our existing housing stock too. So with that, city staff, I think you heard, so I'll go to Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, who has a response. And then city staff, if you could collect sort of what specific direction you need from us, hearing where all of council is. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Just a clarification regarding my own personal view. I do support increased density near transit, but I do not support efforts that would define by a quarter mile, half mile or some other kind of measurement that created a corridor along a transit district that any and all areas would be amenable to increased density. Particularly in our city, we have many neighborhoods that come right up to Palm Canyon in particular, as well as other main thoroughfares where there is transit. And I think we need to be, I'll use the word again that I said earlier, strategic as to where increased density is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Corrus.
Yeah, and not to directly respond, but I think when this comes back for discussion, getting a little more information on that. I think some of the history of single-family housing and the races passed to it and the lack of income diversity as well. And I have a lot of that information I'm happy to share. A lot of the locations that have started, Berkeley, I think, just eliminated single-family housing, have just done it. So I don't know if we have studies that are 10-plus years old or longer on those changes. And I suggest we wait until October to bring it back when we know if the state passes and signs the law that eliminates single-family residential zoning statewide. And I think allowing between eight and 16 units on anywhere. So I think four units closer to transit makes more sense in our city than what the state's doing. I've shared that with state officials as well. But I also understand why the state's doing it. You know, we can't, we're not going to be able to get affordability, protect the open space we want and get the housing we want if we don't make the changes near transit to get more density. We can't, we can't do everything we want as we know because it's failed, not just here, but everywhere in the state of California. So I'm definitely open to options, but we can't expect staff to be able to have all that information today. So my recommendation is we bring it, you know, back. But I think it sounded like there was a majority for, you know, sort of the four units within some amount near transit that's walkable. But I hear you as well, Mayor Pro Tem. I just wanted to, you know, share with staff, you know, I think the information will be helpful for us.
You get the last word today.
Councilmember Wood raised his hand.
I just wanted to echo several of the comments made by several.
I just wanted to echo several of the comments made by several of my colleagues, particularly Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, who said, you know, we need to be strategic in looking at increased density, and I had suggested increasing some density where there was no single family involved. I think what's really going to be important in doing that is that we have good design standards. We deserve good materials that patina well, that last a long time, that look good. We deserve that, and we can still get that and have an affordability, and I just don't want that to be pushed to the side. And I think that's really important to know. Thank you.
Thank you. So city staff, I think you've heard where everyone is in some areas, most areas of consensus. Do you need any other specific direction?
No, I don't believe that we do. Let me just speak a little bit about the housing element, the general plan, and how we implement it, just so that you're aware. In the housing element, we have our goals and our policies, and you'll notice that the language is very general. And as a general plan implies, you're giving general direction in terms of how you go about doing things. It's really in the implementation process that you get into the specific details. So even though we don't say develop fourplexes, you know, adjacent to transit, we do talk about in supporting the development of multiple-family housing in non-traditional areas. When we get to the implementation stage, we'll actually get to the details of how many units, what types of units those are, and where they will be. So just keep in mind, as we talk about the housing element and the goals and the policies, they're written to be very general, but once we get to the implementation stage and we are actually looking at revising our zoning code to implement these changes, that's where we get into the specific detail. So I just want everyone to be aware of that, that as we incorporate your comments, as you see them go forward to the state and as they come back, it may not be to the degree of specificity that you've talked about today, but we are keeping that in mind. And as we go to the implementation stage, that's where we start to get into those details. And I'm happy that we have Aiden joining us now to talk about his housing needs as well. I don't think we need any further direction from city council. We've got pages and pages of notes from what you've given us. We're passing those on to our consultant now, who has the unenviable task of transposing your comments into the goals and the policies and getting those wrapped up by Thursday so that they can submit that to the state. Again, we appreciate your review of this document. You've been through it multiple times. We can see from the depth of your comments, your concerns about housing. And as we get to the implementation stage, we hope to be able to achieve the goals that you've set out here for us today. So again, thank you very much. We appreciate your input, and now we go forward. So with that, thank you, council members, and thank you for making the time for us this morning to give us your comments.
Thank you so much. And as you can tell from our depth of our comments, we very much appreciate your work, and this is one of the top issues for our community and why it's so important to invest this time. So I know it's extra work for you, but just very, very important to our community. Councilmember Garner had her hand raised.
Thank you. Just one quick question. Did we agree at all on the land use in terms of Desert Highlands Gateway Estates? Because I know that we discussed wanting to talk about some of these changes more at a later date, but I'm not.
I heard staff say they will include those changes and revisions. Is that right?
Yeah, and we heard that from the council members as well.
Okay, just wanted to confirm. So anything that the Planning Commission and then the council echoed will be included, but the rest will be discussed later. Okay, thank you.
Anything else before we adjourn? Thank you all for your time this morning. We very much appreciate it. Thank you for building housing for the future. And we will go ahead and adjourn at 11:33. Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a great weekend. Thanks, everyone.